Mr. Nicholas?
Here.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Charles? Mr. Greider? Ms. Wilder? And Mr. Foose?
Second.
Aye, opposed? All right, first up.
Grow Cedar Valley. Hi, Kerry. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kerry Darrow with Grow Cedar Valley, and it's great to be here. And as always, we really do appreciate your time to allow Grow Cedar Valley to provide and share our most current update. So our board chair, John Deere, Waterloo Factory Manager Becky Glenn couldn't be here today, but several of our other team members are. So we'd like to provide you with an update. You do have a packet that was provided with most of the data and information that we typically provide. So we don't have that up on the screen, but that's because we have another quick presentation towards the end of our Grow Cedar Valley organizational comments. Staying strong and working with the Cedar Valley community has always been our highest priority, and I'm extremely proud of our team, those that are here and even those that aren't even here today, and our partners that stay connected and really collaborative in moving forward. In the packet that was provided for you, hopefully you had a chance to review the updates. But you'll hear from our team on some of the specifics. Our commitment to the city of Waterloo is to providing economic development services through marketing and cultivating leads, exploring and expanding innovation, practices with our existing businesses and industries to grow the current economy, and across the board with every business, industry, and sector prioritize workforce growth and development initiatives. And we've heard that loud and strong, and I know you have too, but workforce, workforce, workforce. And there's a lot of different ways you can approach that, and I think what you'll hear today will be some of those. So right now, I'd like to introduce Lisa Skubel. She's our Vice President of Economic Development to share some other updates. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having us here this afternoon. We continue to appreciate your collaboration with us, and we have seen growth with expansion from our existing businesses with ribbon cuttings, groundbreaking, and state incentive approvals since November. So we've been really staying busy on the existing business front. Some of those projects include CPM's project, they're groundbreaking recently. We have worn transport that we, even though they've started construction, they'll be doing a formal groundbreaking on Thursday, so we're glad to be able to participate with that by bringing our ambassadors. Hydrate Chemical and Image Point Dignity Apparel as well. Also, since our last update, we saw an increase of 12 new project leads, mostly external, while preparing 11 prospect proposals on behalf of the city. And we also had a prospect visit as well during that time. Various projects of all sizes in the industry sector, but predominantly warehouse and durable goods manufacturing for those types of project leads we've been seeing. We worked with the company, with the city and company officials over the winter to support Hydrate Chemical's expansion to the state for business tax credits for their planned $21 million expansion that they have underway right now. We also continue our lead generation initiatives targeting the Netherlands. Again, those are in your report on page two. Our goal right now is identify four additional qualified leads, adding to the six quality leads that we received in late 2021.
Mr. Mayor? Would it be possible to put the correct PowerPoint on so the citizens can see what we're doing?
Yes, I believe that we had sent it to you folks, but...
I have that one, but I'm just saying, just... What she's talking about? I apologize, but I just...
There we go.
There we go. Thank you.
So we can, how do we go back? Thank you for pointing that out. So on this page two, GCV is also monitoring the interactions on our economic development website to track which companies are interacting with certain pages. This is initiative we started a year ago, so if you look on that, on page two of this image, as everyone can see, we call it Project Engage. And as you can see on there, it identifies the type of industry sectors and a number of companies from November through the end of April who have looked at our economic development pages, just looking for information, and everything from data to workforce, among other things. And then we reach out to these companies that we identified if they fit targeted industries that we're trying to attract to Waterloo and Cedar Valley. We reach out to them individually to identify additional interest in our community and see how we can help them. As a result, to date, we were able to have one meeting with the company since our last update in November, and that's out of 81 targeted companies who visited our website since our last update. We also, as noted below, we have been participating through Site Selection Guild to meet up with leading site selection consultants to understand changes in corporate site selection and pitching our location for current and future leads. We call it marketing to the marketers, if you will. We have seen this effective. This has helped us to reconnect with our old site selection colleagues we've built up during relationships we've built up over the last two to three decades and establish new relationships with new site selection consultants for the next generation of business recruitment. We have been conducting existing business visits with much conversation surrounded around workforce. GCV staff has been connecting these businesses to resources that will help them with training or tapping non-traditional workforce that might be overlooked. That's much of a split between the work that Danny and I currently do out there for Waterloo businesses. We continue to see a strong interest by companies for available industrial buildings. From our relationships with brokers and site selection consultants, we've been able to connect the community with developers and showcase the opportunities that present here for doing industrial construction. In March, Grow Cedar Valley, Hawkeye Community College, UNI, and ISU SIRIS team began partnering with manufacturers in the area to relaunch what you might already be familiar with over the past decade called Cedar Valley Manufacturers Association. This is an industry-led association that will prioritize common issues for their industry. Right now, the association is led by 10 manufacturers with plans to expand membership later this year. Two of the co-chairs include the leaderships from Power Engineering Manufacturing and CPM Ross Camp in Waterloo. Last week, Grow Cedar Valley partnered with Iowa Economic Development Authority and Hawkeye Community College to host a webinar for manufacturers to register on a statewide supplier connection portal that IEDA created to help Iowa manufacturers connect with each other and support the greater supply chain in the state. As a result of last Wednesday's webinar, five companies have registered for the portal so far. We will pushing out the recorded link later this week to those manufacturers that may not have been able to make that webinar. The relaunch of CVMA and the supply chain portal promotion is part of our initiatives, one of our many initiatives of supporting Waterloo's existing businesses. So having said that, I will switch it over to Danny, who will update you on GCV's work with talent attraction and retention, placemaking, and innovation.
Hi, everyone. Danny Lottic, Grow Cedar Valley. So first, just want to cover a few of the more tactical things we're doing on the workforce side. Then at the end of this, I'll kind of segue into talking about the River Redevelopment Project. I know it's kind of the second piece on the agenda, but just some of the immediate things we've been working on. So Lisa mentioned the Cedar Valley Manufacturers Association. Probably no surprise when you get a bunch of manufacturers in the room and ask them what their problems are, they just all talk about workforce. So we've essentially been sitting down really closely with Waterloo schools. The group essentially decided that their number one priority right now needs to be getting more youth interested in manufacturing, hands-on with those career opportunities. There hasn't been a lot of exploratory options for students anymore. We don't have a lot of shop classes that we used to. So we've been working really closely with Waterloo schools to figure out how do we do more to introduce, especially middle school age, students to manufacturing careers, hands-on careers, just anything in that career pathway. So working right now really closely to actually sit down and go through the entire process of what programs currently exist, whether the barriers to getting students involved. The schools struggle a lot with even counselor abilities to be able to help students with career advising. Right now, counselors spend about 80 to 90% of their time on more of the emotional learning, EL, I remember the terminology, but the emotional learning side of counseling, and about 10% on career advising. So that's one of the big issues, is they're not really giving the time to help students actually discover what careers are out there, what areas should they be going into. So we're going to be sitting down to really go through, how do we support the schools on their counselor side? What can we do as an industry to help support them? Is it more resources towards certain programs? Is it better advice on the programming? So really digging in with them on that. That's also supporting a lot of the Ignite program that Hawkeye's been doing, the Tech Works. They'll be working on that new second floor center for their advanced training, automation training center. So doing a lot for how do we engrain what's happening there with a lot of the school system so that students get opportunities to actually jump into that stuff. We're working with Waterloo Schools on a big career expo. This is the first time they've done it, really similar to something they did down in Cedar Rapids. It's with JA, Junior Achievement. They're going to have every single, I think, eighth, maybe eighth grader, eighth and ninth, I can't remember, going through, hands-on with every career field. It's a whole day thing. I think they're bringing up Waterloo Convention Center, if I remember right. So working, support them with that. They'll have every single type of occupation represented, a lot of hands-on activities. So that'll be this fall. We are working with them on a summer kind of tech exploratory program, I think, four or six weeks, but actually getting a chance each week to figure out different technology careers. And again, just trying to expose a lot of the middle school age students to a lot of the career opportunities that you don't really get a chance to see. One that you see up here on the screen, so the new Liveability Cedar Valley Magazine, we did hit the $100,000 funding mark. So we've gotten $100,000 in advertising funding for the magazine to be able to get it kicked off, which the more advertising we got, $100,000 is what we're going for, the more content we can include. So we'll be able to include a pretty good amount of major content for the area, covering a lot of the quality of life things, the diversity in our region, recreation, arts and culture, the healthcare that we have in the area. This magazine is really meant to be the single piece that when someone asks, why should I move to this area? That they can just pick up, flip through it for a few minutes, and be like, oh, okay, this is why I want to move here. It doesn't have all the comprehensive information about the community, but it's just meant to be that first eye-catching piece. And we'll be doing this for a three-year contract with Liveability to have a new magazine every year. So we'll have a whole distribution strategy for getting out all the hotels, motels, all the employers to use in their recruiting, all the welcome centers. We'll be using it in a lot of our newcomer, expanded newcomer offerings we'll be doing. So really helping to push that as a tool to get people excited about coming to the area. Some of the bigger things, I mentioned the newcomer piece, that's one that, as we've been digging in the last six months or so, we found is something we need to do a lot more with. We have a lot of people moving here. So Blackhawk County, most recent data in 2018 and 19, had 6,600 new people move into the county. We had 7,700 leave, so we still need to address the net amount, but we had 6,600 new people move here. And so realistically, we know there's probably at least about 6,000 people moving here every year. So we need to do a much better job, just like any company, when they onboard their new employees, they get them connected, they help them meet other people at the company. We need to do the same with our newcomers. So next Tuesday, actually, will be the first inaugural Cedar Valley Welcome Reception. So it'll be a single speed downtown here. We'll provide the first beverage, we'll have food, we'll have some door prizes, Lost Island, hopefully get some tickets from there for the new theme park, Gallagher Blue Dwarfs, some show tickets, theaters. The whole goal is just anyone new to the area can meet other newcomers, get connected with all the resources they need, and a chance for us to get feedback from newcomers on what is it like when you move here, whether you struggle getting information on, and just making sure anyone that moves here has a good experience, gets connected. Because we hear from a lot of newcomers that, especially lately because of COVID, that they moved here three years ago and they still haven't really connected. They go to the grocery store, they go home, and they go to work. That's what we hear from a lot of them. So really doing a lot more to keep those 6,600 people that we have moving here each year. So the big thing then to transition... So this, I'll kind of intro it here, and then Isaiah is going to come up, and he'll be able to give a lot of the details on the project specifics. So Destination Iowa, so the state of Iowa through the Iowa Economic Development Authority, just about a month and a half ago, announced this new $100 million funding pool to go specifically toward really quality-of-life projects in the state. And they're really aiming for large transformational projects that can really be a tourism draw, that create an asset that not other communities can replicate easily. So the program through IDA really buckets, they have four buckets. One is economically significant development, and there's $30 million in that bucket. It's really for vertical infrastructure, building projects, things like that. Outdoor recreation is river projects, trail projects, anything that's outdoor rec-related, that's a $40 million pool. Tourism traction is $10 million, so that's for just a lot more tourism events, things that would draw people to the state. And then the creative placemaking project is one they haven't announced all the information for. It's a smaller pool of funds. They'll have that coming out soon. The way they released this program was they kind of set an opening date, which was May 9th, is when the applications opened up, with no deadline. It was essentially, the money's there, apply as you will. They really encourage large collaborative regional projects, and it's also on a very short timeline, which if anyone's ever tried to coordinate large regional collaborative projects, it takes some time. So we've been really working closely between us, Intercog, you guys, City of Cedar Falls, and Kerry, pulled together about 18 months ago, started this big project of looking at what are the major transformational things we can invest in as a region to really address that workforce number. So about 18 months ago, engaged with Vanderwall to start looking at what's the major recreational opportunity we have, and the river was the one thing that continually come up as, this is something we have that we have not really utilized as much as we could. I grew up here, and we used to boat on the river, but we've never really thought of it as a recreational destination in the town. So that kind of then, when this funding came up, and this is one-time funding, kind of from the ARPA funds that came from the federal government, and the state was really looking at originally not doing $100 million, they were looking at doing a much smaller pool. And they kind of put a request out to all the communities around the state, say, if this money was available, what cool projects would you guys have that we could potentially help fund? And because of the scale of projects that came in, they actually went from thinking about $10 million to about $100 million for this funding, because they realized there's a lot of projects out there that communities are wanting to get to work on, but having the funding would help a lot. So this program, they announced it, again, pull the timeline up here. So applications open on May 9th. The funds are available until expended. The deadlines for funding and contracting are really based on some of the federal guidelines. All of the funds, if you're awarded, have to be fully contracted by the end of 2024, and they have to be fully expended by the end of 2026. So this program is really meant to be about a four-year program of whatever ideas you come up with, need to be large, transformational, really long-term investments. So these pictures here, you'll see this as draft working document. These are documents that Kerry has been working a lot with the mayors on, with Vanderwall, to really look at whether, if we could envision the Cedar River as a major recreational project, what would that look like? And really, how can we use that as a project to connect the two downtowns in a significant way? Because we're one of the few communities that can say we have two major downtown areas within one area that's actually, you can spend a day going back and forth between the two. So this project here kind of looks at what are all the major projects, all the way from downtown Cedar Falls to downtown Waterloo, and how do we create that region as a recreational destination? So a lot of this is just a draft working document. Vanderwall, over the last about month and a half or so, has been doing feedback interviews with different stakeholders in the community, asking what types of projects are already going on, what types are planned, what types have been talked about but don't have the funding, start compiling, what does this look like to actually bring this all together? So you can kind of see, it looks at the river experience, that sports destination experience, and you can see a lot of this models, a lot of the 2030 vision plan that you guys have put together, there was a lot of input from that. The trails experience, the lighting experience, projects in lighting the bridges, and then just that cultural experience of actually being a part of the downtowns, how are people experiencing that? So this is a much bigger project, this visioning, that Vanderwall was already working on, and Kerry has already been helping work on with the mayors prior to this grant funding coming out. So the scope of this really is much bigger than what this grant is, but when this grant funding came out, we then had to look and say, okay, of all these projects that have been looked at in this whole river experience, what can we meaningfully put together now for this application that's near shovel-ready, near enough to be included in this? Because they do have some restrictions on the needs-to-be, close to being ready to implement, because you have to be able to have it done by the end of 2026. But if it's already been contracted and done, you can't apply for it. So it's kind of that middle ground of far enough that it's ready, but it hasn't already been worked on. So we started pulling together what are all those projects that we have along this river that fit that. And Isaiah talked more on the projects, but really wanted to phrase up or frame up why now, why this is important. So when you look at our working age population from about 2014, 2019, it declined by about 2,574 people in that period. This is for the whole MSA, kind of the extended MSA region. And right now, when looking at just the census data and our overall IRS data on how many people are moving in and out of the county area, we're losing about 965.8 people per year in the 2016-2020 average. So we're in the spot where, you know, and I showed there the numbers for the previous five years before that, we had an average gain of 39. So over a five-to-10-year period, those numbers can fluctuate a lot, so we can bring that number back up, but it does take investments and intentional focus on what are the types of assets and things that people are looking for in the communities that they want to get part of. We all know, and I'm sure probably have heard from plenty of employers, that there's jobs out there. So it's really just figuring out what are the things we invest in that will help them bring people here for those jobs and help us keep the, instead of the 6,600 that we know have already moved here. So I will hand it off to Isaiah, and he can really cover more of the project-specific details. I actually need to go jump over to Blackhawk Gaming's board meeting to give the same presentation. So I will give it to Isaiah, and we'll step out.
And you'll be in Cedar Falls tonight, is that right?
Yes, I will be in Cedar Falls.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Isaiah Corbin, and I'm from Intercog. And so I've been working a lot with Grow Cedar Valley, John Deere, and the mayors, and a bunch of stakeholders on this placemaking project. And so just to give you a little bit of a background, we started kind of back in the winter of 2021, thinking about what are some things that we need to do to grow and retain individuals in our community. And working with Grow Cedar Valley, we had some money in our CARES planning fund, and we started to talk about placemaking and what that would look like. And so we got together as a team, and we hired Vanderwall to do this placemaking project. And so really, all this comes out of the placemaking project that we're doing. The unfortunate thing is timing's not always on our side. And so this placemaking project, what we were really hoping for is this funding from Destination Iowa would come out a little later in the summer, so we'd have an opportunity to finish a lot of this placemaking work, but it's out now. And so that's why we're kind of looking at combining the two and working and intertwining the two. And we met last Thursday, and Vanderwall had written down four goals, and they've been going out to different stakeholders and thinking about kind of what this means and why we're doing it. And I just wanted to share those with you. The first one is to enhance our regional impact and growth. The second is to transform the Cedar Valley into a magnet for great talent retention and growth. The third is elevate our national assets, resources, and cultural amenities at the regional, state, and national level. And finally, to promote Cedar Falls and Waterloo's unique position in the state of Iowa as a distinctive yet connected community. And so that's really where it came down to this map, is how can we connect the two downtowns to each other utilizing our common source with the Cedar River? And so when you look at this map, what we really wanted to do is look at what are our anchor projects in both communities, and then everything in between. And so as you can see from the map, we've really identified about three or four really, really critical anchor projects that we think can connect the two and combine them with some what we're calling connector projects. So those are little smaller projects. And so when we identified the anchor projects, we're, right now, we're in the process of kind of working through what are some of the requirements. The thing with Destination Iowa is it's kind of new for them with the ARPA funds, and they're still trying to work out the kinks and figure out what the requirements are. And so we're working with both the city mayors and their staff and trying to identify kind of what are the best fits in terms of readiness and competitiveness for the grant. And so these are the anchor projects that we identified. The Waterloo Whitewater Course, the Four Street Bridge Lighting and Towers, which is already funded, the Waterloo Hard Courts, River Road Parkway, and then on Cedar Falls' side, it's the multimodal parking ramp in their own Center Street and Main Street Bridge lighting to connect the two. And so those are the projects. We're kind of working through them and figuring out which ones might be the best fit, but they fit into the plan overall. And then when we identified the connector projects, really, these connector projects come out of the Blackhawk County Master Trails Water Plan. And so the Blackhawk County Trails Water Master Plan is all finished. Intercog's working on making that a designated water trail, they're putting up the signs. And so these are smaller projects in between the two downtowns that really help connect and bring home the two downtowns. And like I said, a lot of these projects kind of vary in size and scope depending on them, but this is the, kind of the in-between smaller projects for the larger application. And I can certainly share some more specifics about the connector projects as well. So these are the projects that we're looking at. Like I said, we're still kind of thinking about how they all fit and match into what could be a potential application with Destination Iowa. We have our anchor projects that we've identified, and then our connector projects, and then the totals between the two with our complementary projects that are already being worked on by both the cities. And so overall, that's kind of the vision that we see with the Cedar River. And so we're going to start moving forward with the application and continuing to work with the city staff on what that might look, and we'll be sure to kind of update you as we work through the plan. This is our timeframe for what we put forth for the Cedar River placemaking, and it was short and condensed. And so right now, we're kind of finalizing that vision of what it might be, doing our opportunities analysis and putting together the graphics. And so we're hoping to have a phasing and implementation at the end of June, which we'll be sure to share with both cities as well. And that's the end of mine. Is there any questions?
Yeah, please.
Just briefly, I think one of the takeaways we hope you're all impressed with and excited about is the collaboration between Waterloo and Cedar Falls on a transformational project, which may or may not include some of the pieces that were just pointed out to you. So I think, as Isaiah said, right now, we're in the, at the point... So I think, as Isaiah said, right now, we're in the, at the point of looking at each of them and finding out if the timing of each of them fit into the project requirements. Again, we started 18 months ago looking at the need for the collaborative piece between, among our region, between our metro area, Waterloo, Cedar Falls, but our surrounding areas too. So we've got a lot of communities upstream and downstream that that river can continue to connect. But I think the biggest piece today, in addition to the specifics that Danny and Isaiah shared with you, is that you have a lot of people working on a collaborative project. And I'll tell you, the state is impressed. We've heard from IEDA and the governor's office that, and it's not just our community, but that's exactly what they wanted to see. And that is that we've got a collaborative, bigger-than-one-community mentality with this project. So if there are questions, I mean, he's still the one to ask the questions. I just wanted to share that.
And, you know, just thank you for your leadership, having access to those on the state level to try to take a look to see how we can somehow bring both of our communities together. The river is a logical place, the ability to be able to start in downtown Waterloo and take some taxi up to Cedar Falls. The connector projects, which we'll go a little bit further in depth, are ways to get boats and waters more efficiently. Taking a look at the overall trail system around that and then being able to connect our, you know, downtowns is an incredible start. So exciting, and we got, as a community, to have communities this size, to be connected to one another is incredible.
As Isaiah said, we have, at least Grow Cedar Valley started about 18 months ago with the understanding from WDC and CFEDC that, about 18 months ago with that, we've got a beautiful river. It's one of the most underutilized natural resources of our area, at least, if not the state. And so our request was, let's take a look at what's already going, what's already been done. Like you've got the boathouse that you've already done. We've got the marina underway. Let's take it, let's take an assessment of what's already been done, what's in the queue that's proposed, pretty much paid for, but not done yet. But most importantly, what's the vision for what can be done? But you needed to have all of those elements pulled together before we could move forward.
And as Isaiah mentioned before we take questions, the financial piece is something to be taking a look at. And so what you have up there is a broad spectrum of projects. But once they hone in, those will come back before all of you to take a look specifically at what's going to be done. Jamie has an incredible amount of work and communication that he needs to do with the Army Corps and the DNR. So things may change. The WDC is looking, you know, what was it? Sports Town USA and having a regional attraction with sports and so with the hard court. So there's a lot of things that need to be worked out in a very short amount of time. And Isaiah had indicated today that there are some other communities out there that are competing for this opportunity as well.
I think the other piece away, other piece of takeaway information is that this fits beautifully in your pillars of progress and your strategic plan with Fly the W and then everything along the way. There are pieces and parts of those pillars that this project can really contribute towards. I was supposed to give a tech works update too, but I can do that later or?
Let's see what questions they have.
Yeah, but please go ahead and ask questions. I'm not sure how much time we have.
Questions, counsel.
Well, we're always here and we're always available, so if something pops up.
Thank you.
Sure. And then quickly on tech works, the exciting news is that you probably already know that Hawkeye Community College is going to be leasing the entire second floor of tech works, the Tech One building, and beginning the strike, excuse me, the Smart Automation Training Center. It'll be one of a handful in the country that will be training our future workforce in automation and robotics. They'll start construction on July 1st. But what that does mean, and we're really, really excited about it too, but it also means it displaces the Grow Cedar Valley office. So we'll be moving so they can have the entire second floor. But right now, it looks like we'll be moving up one floor immediately above where we are now and we'll be co-located with Productive Resources Volunteer Center and Leader Valley. And right now, we're working on those agreements. But we've got every, so far, we've got a lot of win-wins going on. So really good stuff going on at tech.
I thought you were going to be partner with LSB at the huge screen coming up the steps.
Probably will use it once in a while, but nope, they've got their own space.
NCAA tournament is going to be incredible.
As always, we really, really appreciate the collaboration and the partnership that we have with the city of Waterloo. You have a team that's working for you every single day with many of you on a regular basis. So please don't hesitate to reach out if there's anything that pops up or you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We gotta wait till 4:15.
Marty here.
Thank you.
Let's get at it.
It's not my fanciest, nicest open one, but.
It's the best one, dude. Yeah.
Saw the first two, but I never saw that third one.
Yeah, this one and this one?
No, I've seen the first two. The third one, I don't know. When did this get added? Okay. I would have reviewed it.
You finished it.
Oh, okay. I'll explain why I couldn't see this. I was just fielding phone calls all day. And emails. They were ugly. Yeah, they finally told us. Marty is here. Later. They arrested the guy. They didn't get to his house. He's got hungry because he was working.
Sir. It's your floor, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Martin Peterson, Legal Department. I'm here on behalf of the Housing.
Passports Forum, head of mayor. We've met for over a year. And the main approach we took with regard to our discussions and proposals is we assume the current budget is what we are working with. We assume the present staff is what we're working with. And so that's the framework within which we started deliberating on how to make what we do in the city better. Mayor Hurt formed it and we worked with the University of Iowa, research projects related to housing, and they made certain recommendations. And we sort of started the process that way. We met with groups of us, met with Mr. Jones, Angie, Ms. Bowman, Mayor, Mr. Anderson, myself and the city clerk. I'm forgetting, but we met with tenants advocacy groups. We met with Black Hawk County Landlord Association. We reviewed the best practices from comparable cities. We found a need for updated landlord rental policies. We also found that there needs to be improved communication policies. We also found that we need more rental inspectors. We had more than 10,000 rental units plus complaint inspection. And currently have one full-time inspector. Part-time inspector was just added in conjunction with the FOG inspector. And we had hoped to obtain one more full-time inspector through Community Development's application to HUD. It does not appear that that is going to come to fruition. And so we are at 1.5 inspectors. Looked at data concerning other cities. We have 10,000 units, we have one and a half boys inspecting. Cedar Falls has approximately 300 units, one full-time and four part-time fire department inspectors. Also buffs, 7668, with three full-time units, 15,000 with three. Iowa City has 20,000 units, six full-time inspectors, two full-time municipal officers. The Felkley had corresponded, I emailed with various other cities. And we believe the standard is that there is one inspector minimum per, excuse me, per 3,000 units. Priorities we identified were to improve the rental registration program compliance. We already have in our books a framework to do that. And we need to improve compliance in that regard. We built a couple of things into the ordinance that would, hopeful will help us achieve those goals. Obviously, we need to increase frequency and volume inspections. We like the idea of, once we know that a property is standard, to sort of eventually implement a, maybe up to a five-year requirement. Every five years, an inspection occur. That would free up more resources to devote to more properties that need it. We don't think now is the time to do that, simply because the main areas that we are presently in need of are registration and inspection. And we don't feel we're in a position to determine which properties would go on to the five-year or three-year rotation. So we like that idea, but we don't think it should be implemented at this point in time. There were concerns about resources of inspector time. I'm going back for re-inspections. And so we increased the fees to deter having the inspector have to go back two or three times. We also decided that we're going to start perhaps filing more municipal infraction cases in court once the second inspection fails. And so that's going to be a staff determination and discretionary use of that tool. We also compared the inspection fees. And we think we should increase the re-inspection fees. But with regard to regular inspection fees, originally, our idea was with the standard in Iowa would be about $35 for a registration. We're currently under audit by the state of Iowa for that program. And so we also do not believe, while we do believe we shouldn't increase the registration fees, we don't think now is the appropriate time until we get the results back from this audit. There was a 2002 case out of West Des Moines where Des Moines Home Builders or Greater Des Moines sued the city of West Des Moines for a fee that was charged for parks. So there was this analysis conclusion by the Supreme Court that it was a tax and that they spelled out the law that the city specifically has to have authority to levy a tax. And that type of tax wasn't allowed under the Iowa code. So the analysis was though, that if you're charging a fee, in this case, to landlords, you have to show and articulate that the fee is being used to administer and promote and pay for that program. So we're under audit. Our program is under audit, so we don't feel as though we should increase the fee at this point in time until that results from the audit come, which I don't know. I can sit here and speculate about when that's going to happen. We also talked about adjusting the inspection permit cycle, which I just referred to, and develop that cycle once we get more properties inspected and registered. I think it's a priority to improve communication with property owners and tenants, improve collaboration across departments and information sharing, confirm minimum requirements for habitable spaces, mention national standards. We feel that our standards do, by utilizing the HUD national standards for what items to look for and consume about on inspections. We want to also create new incentives for property owners to maintain and improve properties. And Mr. Jones may be able to add a word about that. And then once Mr. Jones updates us on that, those program, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Peterson. So in trying to complement all of the different needs that we have in community development, we were super excited of the possibility of maybe of funding that additional property inspector. Angie did a great job communicating back and forth with our HUD reps. We just were not able to make it work and fit and meet compliance standards. So instead of just pushing it all aside, Angie found a way to roll over those dollars into a rental rehabilitation program that she can speak more into detail about what that looks like. So we've got a relatively starter pot of funds that can assist landlords into addressing some of those housing issues that they have. Where we've been with our LEAD grant program, we've also been addressing rental units that have kids primarily in there. What we've been finding out over the last couple, two, three months is as we move down our process, after even we have signed contracts for work to begin, tenants are providing their landlords with, in 30 days, they're going to be leaving. Now HUD has a caveat that they allow us to do 10% vacant units. I think when we realized that, we were already at 7%. So we'll have a few more vacant units that we can address. But after that, the units, the rental units particularly, have to have children that meet the primary purpose of the program. And Angie's going to speak more to what that rental program looks like in terms of the dollars and our intent.
So we're currently in the process of implementing the rental rehabilitation program. This program will provide loans to landlords that are, they either have infractions with the code enforcement department. Maybe they've got some things going on with Barry, our rental inspector, or if they just have a slum blighted property in some of our target areas. The loan will provide up to $25,000 per landlord. We have decided if we do need to put additional funds into a property, that would be at the discretion of Rudy, our director. But right now, we're, it's in the beginning stages, but they are, we implemented this program to kind of go along with the ordinance changes so that as these changes come about, we have a solution. We don't want to just start implementing ordinances that we don't have, you know, answers for. If a landlord is, you know, in a financial situation and they can't take care of it, maybe we can help with some resources and provide them a loan to correct some of their ordinance infractions.
So as we have for questions now? Just really quickly, one of the most critical things that we have to do is take a look at overall housing throughout this entire community. If you do a windshield drive through the committee, you can see a ton of properties in disrespect and disrepair. And a lot of our community members are paying exorbitant amounts of rent for places that could use some improvements. We've been having conversations and have been thinking of a way for us to be able to approach this, to be, to work with our landlords, our good landlords, but also have some consistent practices in the way that we approach this. And so I think we, it may have And so I think we, it may have been longer than about a year ago, I wanted to put together this internal committee first to take a look at our overall policies. And then in conjunction with the University of Iowa, also take a look at what other communities are doing across the entire state of Iowa to see how we can do things more efficiently and smarter. So we had this group working together and it's also tied into our number two strategic goal as well, which is housing. And we've been taking a look at some out of the box approaches to be able to help homeownership and to be able to help our residents get some decent housing. So one of the first views was to take a look at what we actually have on the books before we start to create anything new. What do we have here? Because we've had conversation, I'm sure a lot of you have, about, well, we need to enforce this or we need to do it this way. So the first thing we wanted to do was to just take a look at what we have internally and see if we can work from there because it may have just been a case where we may not have been enforcing it. And so we wanted to take a deep dive, look into those areas and to see exactly what we have. And so in front of you is about a year's work of culmination of coming together with, you know, we have our dilapidated housing commute, I mean, task force. So how does a house go from brand-new house to being challenged? So we just kind of wanted to take a look at what we have on here and strengthen what we have as the foundation for the decisions we make with rental properties and folks as well. So questions, questions, it's a lot at once. Mr. Nichols?
I had a question for Angie, oh, sorry, yeah, Angie. Could you come up just about the engagement within the program? Do you have landlords that are currently already engaged with your rental rehab program?
So we are implementing the program with our lead hazard control program as well because right now that program will allow a landlord up to 20,000. And if they were going, if our scope of work was going over 20,000, the landlords were responsible, but we're finding that some of the things on the scope of work were also the items that would pass an HQS inspection. So we're kind of working, the loans that I have provided to date were for the lead program. And what that was is anything that went over 20,000, we were providing the loan. So they will have to pay that back. But it was just a way to, with our lead program, you have to address all lead or none at all. And so we didn't want them to walk away. We did want to complete the work. So this was just a way to also get them to implement that for the rentals as well.
And if there are landlords that are looking to engage with your program, how would they get ahold of you?
They can contact Community Development at 319-291-4429. And again, they can speak with me, Angie Fordice. Otherwise, Mindy and Anita can also help with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a few questions for Marty. On this, on your amendments to the, to the ordinance, and you were talking about waiting to implement the change in the registration fee, is that correct?
Yes.
Because originally, registration fee was $25 per unit. And, and when we sold this program to the landlords, we talked to them about we're going to be inspecting once every three years and it's an impossible task with one and a half inspectors. At least I don't think we can do it once every three years.
I agree.
Okay. So now we're looking at going to maybe implementing the once every five years, but if we increase to $35, I mean, that's an extra $100,000 in, in registration fees compared to our $250,000 we make at $25 per 10,000 units. So is that what the financing that we're going to look at to try to pay for another inspector?
Yes, I can't speak to the finance, the more budget, the revenue goes, but that makes sense.
Because I, I know you've been working with the Landlord's Association, but I could see some resistance to raising it to $35 if we're not going to provide more service.
Right.
If we're not going to have, have more frequent inspections than we do now. And that's the reason I ask. And then also in here, some of your fees that we were looking at going to on the reinspection fee, what is, what is the current reinspection fee first time? Do you have that information available? If it's non-compliance?
I believe that is...
Something on page six is what you're proposing. Because I believe you're going to $50 for the first unit not in compliance, 150 the second reinspection, not in compliance, and 250 the third, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's currently $50.
So that's not changing?
Correct.
Okay, but on number two below where it says a fee of $100 shall be charged for scheduled inspections where the appointment is not kept. What are we charging currently?
I don't believe you're charging anything.
Okay. But my, my question to that is if I'm, if I'm a landlord and I own a 12plex and I've got violations in every one of them, and I choose not to, I didn't get them fixed. And if I showed up for my appointment, I owe you 600 bucks, $50 per unit that didn't meet, that weren't in compliance. But if I'm a no-show, I only owe you 100 bucks.
And we may file a citation across the street.
Okay, but you feel you're going to do that quite often because if I was a landlord, I wouldn't show up if I had a lot of stuff to fix, if I could, if I only had to pay $100. I'm just curious if we should have a charge, a no-show charge per unit, whether it's one unit, it's $100, or whether it's multiple units that, that you're, I mean, if Barry goes out to inspect a 12plex or re-inspect a 12plex, that's, that's a lot of time that, that he's got to shuffle in if it's a no-show. And I'm just looking at it as a fact that if I, it's a way to, to work around the system and I'd hate to see someone do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have a couple of just different questions. Marty, for you maybe, maybe for you, Mayor. In the findings, it says 10,000 units. Is that 10,000 units actually landlords who have self-identified as far as being inspected? Or is that, how did you arrive at the 10,000 units? That's the first question. And if it is just self-identifying, how do you know that there are other landlords out there that have not identified that they are landlords? That's the first question.
I think I can answer that. So from September through May, through the present, we've registered 10,778 rental units. And I think we have fairly decent compliance. The reason I say that is because each year when we go to do, to start the rental registration period, we request from Black Hawk County a listing of each property within the community that's zoned residential or, I guess for multiple places, that don't have a home state tax exemption on the property. And that listing generates about 9,500 properties. From that list, we then have to go through and filter out the duplicates to arrive at what we relatively feel is a listing of several of the units within the community. So based on that, I think there's more out there for sure. But based on what numbers I have to look at, that's fairly close.
And then the other question, and I, I'm not sure the answer on this one, but let's say like there was a homeowner, they are not in the home, but there's someone else in the home. And kind of looking at the ordinance, I couldn't quite decipher. So if the actual person who's on the beat is not in the home, and there's someone else living in the home, is that considered to be a rental unit or not?
We are proposing to really cast, I don't know, with what our definition of a rental is. So if it does not have home state tax credit and it's not the person in the dwelling, then we're generally considering that to be a rental. What we run into when we're doing the registration process is an individual will own a home, they will have another individual occupied that dwelling, and they may not charge that person rent, but that person may pay the utility bills, they may shovel snow, maintain the property, things like that. They'll say that's not a rental, but in general, the way the code is even written, it's technically a rental because some sort of services being exchanged.
That's why I asked that question because...
So we're trying to clean some of those things up.
All right, thank you.
We also discussed, there are many buildings that are vacant and not being leased to anybody. So we've discussed creating, some cities have vacant structure registration program. But again, we, we thought, given budget the way it is and staffing the way it is, what we decided was in 975, in a rental unit permit, we added a sentence in page three at the top of the actual ordinance, it says, "Registration shall be required regardless of whether the unit is occupied by a tenant." So we thought that was an efficient way to regulate vacant buildings in addition to, Ms. Felkley said, people living...
So having heard that, let's say like there are empty places around where a bank has them that require the bank to actually notify the city that that is a vacant property and they are required to register that property, that is that...
Yes. But again, I mean, I think it's going to be fact-driven and it's going to come down to discretion in some cases if it's listed for sale, for example, and it's after a foreclosure and attempting to clear that asset. And, you know, that's, to me, that's something that should be up to discretion of the officers.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I'm really glad to see this ordinance. And I know there are similar viewpoints in the... We had talked about, Marty particularly, that, that renters be given notification of their rights every time that they get a lease moving forward, as well as the idea that if a landlord isn't registered with us, the city's adopting the doctrine of clean hands in terms of proceedings in which to evict a person in that the landlord may not have been acting in a proper way. I, I would, I guess my concern is that, I know that there are facilities that aren't registered because I've toured them, and oftentimes these are among some of the roughest places to live. I would like to see there be some sort of teeth for those folks because in, in my viewpoint, that is, that is exploitation. And in my belief system, every person should have a safe place to live. And in many of the places that I have had the unfortunate privilege, I guess, of touring, they're not. And so I, I think that there needs to be some sort of teeth for folks who aren't registered. Perhaps it's an amnesty period and then after that, we have some larger enforcement mechanism. But if you're running out to people under the table and taking advantage of them, that to me is, is deeply, deeply concerning. In addition, I have in my experiences found that oftentimes, not oftentimes, sometimes landlords or property owners who live out of state are not as invested in some of their properties. I don't know if there is some sort of incentivization we can do. I know that we require a local property manager. But I, I feel as if there are some cases where people buy, whether it's the housing crisis of 2008 or potential housing crisis that coming up, that, that properties go and they are bought at fire sales and then they're just sort of left as they are and people are taken advantage of. And so I have, I don't know, I don't know what we can do, if we can do anything about that, but I, I guess my preference is always for, you know, people who, who own the property and live in the community, they have to live with the consequences of that. Less so with folks who, who maybe don't. And then I know that the state has made their own decisions about Section 8 housing, but I firmly believe that people who need Section 8 housing, including veterans and working parents and others, deserve to have a chance to have access to adequate housing as well, regardless of the stigmas and stereotypes that exist for those folks. So I would also be supportive of, of helping landlords look at Section 8, perhaps even again, some sort of incentivization program, whether that's with registration fees or elsewhere, because I get that it's paperwork. I get the government creates paperwork. But again, if we look at folks who are on Section 8, regardless of what the stereotypes are, a quarter of them are veterans, half of them are folks with kids, and 75% of them are people that work. And I think that those folks deserve to have access to housing. And so those would just kind of be my three things to have you guys sort of continue to ponder. But overall, I, I really do like this ordinance and I think it does a lot more to help the renters in our community. So thank you all for all of your work on this one.
Anyone else? All right, so your work, Marty, and Jane, I got a... So your next step, would you guys like to see this come forward at some point?
When do you think, sir, that they'll be bringing the fees and everything forward since they said they want to integrate that in the time, timeframe?
There was a comment made as far as the fee and you're waiting for an audit. I guess, do we know when this could be brought before council, considering the, the audit of the, the fee addition?
Well, the ordinance has proposed, has the $3, $5 fee still there. So my opinion is we can pass whatever version you're comfortable with. And then in two months, for example, if the audit comes back and everything's fine, then we can at that point increase the fee.
Well, we'll say the last, last week and last, last meeting in June, that'll give folks an opportunity to be able to reach out. If there's anything out there from the Landlords Association to reach out to us. So we'll say the last week in June, it'll be about a month.
And I would like to, I forgot to mention, Wendy Bowman has led the group, organized the group, and I want to recognize her leadership for the last year or so.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion to adjourn with second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.